Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Record of attendance, declarations of conflict of interest, and approval of agenda. Any additions or deletions? So I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
We'll move to approve the agenda.
Need a seconder.
Second.
Moved and seconded discussion. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. You're on. Well, see?
I did press my green button.
That's the one. Okay, so go ahead. Pressed my green button. That's the first thing I pressed. And then this. There, go.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so budget process. So we'll be here for a little while this morning. Today, we're going to actually get into the operation estimates that Jerry's going to present. I just want to just sort of recap a little bit about where we are and talk a little bit about some of the constraints that we're working with in terms of budget preparation. So, so far in this process, as we usually do, we reviewed our financial indicators, both internal and external, some of those statistics about receivables and about taxes and assessments and so on. And it didn't paint the most optimistic picture in terms of, you know, that we were on a nice curve in an upward direction. However, we proceeded to approve our capital budget and our grants to organizations because we decided last year, and I think it was a good practice, to get those things approved and get those capital works and grants to organizations out the door as early as possible in the year. At our last committee of the whole meeting, we had presentations from the directors and managers, and they spoke, in the most part, they spoke to the priorities of council. And that was what they were asked to do, to tell you how it was that they were going to contribute to the achievement of your goals, your priorities. At the same time, Jerry was reaching out to the directors and managers, looking for budget estimates to begin to assemble the actual operational budget. And it was no surprise to he or I that when those numbers were assembled, that there was a negative bottom line. And neither of us, I don't think, were particularly shocked by the number, which was about 800,000. We've seen numbers actually larger than that in the past, not every year, but some years. And so then Jerry and I begin the process of working with the directors and managers to refine the number and to understand what goes into it. And as I said to you at the last meeting, come up with options for how we can balance the budget. This year, that was a little more challenging than most years, a lot more challenging. You know, last year was difficult, this year was significantly more difficult. So what we would have done last week, had we met, and I asked that we not meet because of the amount of challenge that Jerry and I were having, and I guess the bit of reality that came with that in terms of understanding, you know, exactly where we were. Normally, we would have got together and talked about your priorities. We would have talked about new strategies that you might have come up with, based on reflecting on the presentations from the directors and managers, new areas that you might have wanted to invest additional funds beyond sort of branding and streetscape and those kinds of things that we already have underway. I felt that having that discussion, based on where we were in terms of the operational budget, was probably frankly, a little misleading. Misleading in the sense that we were having real difficulty balancing the operational budget. And to come into here without any numbers and say to you, so what else would you like to do, might set your expectations that in fact, you know, there is a lot of money there that we can start some new initiatives. It wasn't until just yesterday that Jerry and I were able to get to a bottom line with the plus sign in front of it. And that you'll see as Jerry goes through it, took a lot of work. So I just want to talk just for a second about some of the constraints that we're facing as a town when we try to create a balanced budget. So first of all, I have to say that we have to have a balanced budget. We are not allowed to approve a budget with a deficit. That's in law. So we work at it until we have a positive. Now, there's lots of ways that you can reach a positive, even in most difficult times. But one of those strategies is that you can absorb more risk in your budget. So as an example of what I mean there is if our salt budget last year, this past season, was $125,000, which was significantly above the norm. You know, Dave Ernst, based on the history and whatnot, has recommended a budget of 105. But if we came in and said, look, let's make that 80, we can save $25,000 there. What that really does is it introduces a level of risk. We don't know how much salt is going to cost us, but by bringing the number significantly below where the trend is, we're putting risk in the budget. And we may balance the budget, but we will have a deficit at the end of the year. And so those are strategies that we tend to shy away from. So we try to look at trends and try to have, I won't say as little risk as possible in the budget, but we try to manage the level of risk so that we can land the thing at March 31st on budget, or hopefully a little bit to the good side. We have increasing cost pressures that we're dealing with. Everything that we do, hardly anything gets any cheaper. I was frankly, a little bit relieved with the provincial budget a couple of weeks ago that there wasn't more devastating news in it. The preamble to the budget was it was going to be tough and it was going to be difficult. And the toughness and difficulty didn't land on municipalities this year. I wouldn't place bets that we won't see difficult, more challenging situations in future provincial budgets. It's just the reality. Our revenues, as we discussed a couple of months ago, are flat. Our residential assessments have gone down. If it wasn't for the cap, our revenues would be going down on that side. And for the first time in five years, the commercial assessments have gone up. So they had been on a steady decline. I think we had lost something like $10 million in commercial assessment. This year's bump in commercial assessment doesn't come close to making that back up. You know, I think it's a small fraction, maybe just 10% of that. So we have ways to go to climb back up. And really, when it comes to our revenue side, taxes are our biggest source of revenue. And taxes have been flat for about six years now. And so while our costs may increase by maybe 4% a year for what we do, and I think that's rather conservative, given some of the municipal price indexes that bigger cities calculate, having revenues, your largest source of revenue, be absolutely flat means that you're absorbing about 4% of cost out of your, let's call it your buffers that you have within your operating budget. And what we've discovered this year in doing the budget is that those cushions, those buffers, those bits of wiggle room have disappeared. So she's down to a skeleton. Regulatory compliance is an area where we have constraints as well. So a lot of what we do is regulated in terms of wastewater and water. You know, we have issues with insurance and so on. We have issues with department environment in terms of how we do things. And now, in the last couple of years, we have vehicle compliance with department transportation. So our operators within public works can only work, I think it's eight hours, maybe 10 hours, and then they have to take a break of a certain length. And that affects on our overtime costs that we incur as a town. So there are all kinds of regulations that impact on the way we operate. And unfortunately, none of them have gotten easier to deal with. All of them continue to put shackles on the way that we operate. We also, we have some service agreements that we establish. We have a service agreement with the RCMP that has an escalator built into it, and it costs us more every year. We have a waste collection contract that we have for five years. It has a built-in escalator. In fact, we renewed it this year, and there was a significant increase. I call it significant. It was $30,000 a year impact on this year's operational budget. $30,000 impact on this year's operational budget chews up half of the increase in tax revenue from the increased assessment. So no additional value for us. I mean, the business that provides that contract has to do business and make a little money. But their half of our increase disappears just on the collection contract. We also have, and we talk about it a lot, and we're proud of it, and we should be, we have a lot of intermunicipal agreements for provision of service. Now, that's great because it does in fact, save us money. I think we're able to do more with less. However, in the context of doing our budget, it actually puts constraints on us because we don't have the ability, because we've entered some of these agreements with cost-sharing percentages and so on. We can't unilaterally reduce those services. We can go to the table and say, we're putting in less this year, and that causes a different discussion, a different impact on some of those agencies. So that is a self-imposed constraint or restriction that again, gives us less flexibility within the operational budget. We have collective agreements. We have two unions within the town, and we bargained with them, I think, two years ago. There are two years left on those collective agreements. And those agreements commit us to certain increases in their wages, and that again, is a constraint that we deal with. Finally, we impose on ourselves, again, a policy that I think is very sound and wise, and it is that we fund our amortization within our operating budget. So we collect or we rate for, dollar for dollar, the amortization of our tangible capital assets. Well, as you will see from Jerry's numbers, as we invest more in capital, that amortization number goes up, and the requirement to put more of our available resources into that line item increases. So you know, at some point, some things fall off the amortization schedule. But at this point, the amount that goes on is exceeding the amount that is coming off. So those are some of the constraints we dealt with in putting together the operational budget. I'm going to stop talking because Jerry has a lot of numbers to go through. He's done a lot of work on this, and hopefully, this can be very conversational as he goes through it, that you can ask your questions as they come to mind. Because at the end of the day, the point of the process is for you guys to be comfortable with an operational budget and a tax rate that we can approve at an upcoming council meeting, and then we get on with the business of providing services and doing capital and that other stuff we do. So your worship, Jerry's probably ready when you are.
Go ahead, Jerry. Thanks for that. I think I learned more in the last five minutes than I did in the last two years. Serious. It was awesome.
We're not quite there yet.
Are they going to be red and blue this year, Jerry? Or they're probably on the other side?
And I didn't even go buy new shoes yesterday, so. That's the point we're at. We're not ready for new shoes yet.
You got a red and black shirt.
Might be rubber boots, Jerry.
That was.
So Jeff has mentioned, it's been a trial and I'm getting to this point.
So I'll walk you through what we've done and how we got to this point.
So if I don't see your light, just yell, because I'm going to have my head buried in this. Anybody has a question? Sorry, Jerry, go ahead.
Okay, so on the first page, and I'll walk you through how we got to this point, but this is the summary in the Level One that we call our budget. I just wanted to show you a few years of history to kind of let you get a sense for the trends and to reinforce, I guess, what Jeff has mentioned about, you know, tax revenues being the big part of our revenue source. And right there on the front page, first page, you can see how relatively flat they've been. And even with the change and what we do with the last couple of years with the sewer charges, reducing the tax rate and increase in the sewer charges, those two things fall in Line One, which is taxes. So they offset each other, but they're both in there. So in total, the tax revenue is still the tax revenue. So that's not hidden anywhere else. So those numbers are our true taxes. Again, we'll try to focus on Column Six there, which is our 15, 16 budget. And I think the easiest thing to do is just to realize that this year, at this point, we're showing a $251,000 deficit that we have to deal with. And the pages behind, Number Two to Seven, I guess will explain how we got to that point. So it might be easier just to run through and start with Page Two, as opposed to try to deal with Page One and all those numbers. So what we've done is we typically take last year's budget and look at things that change, and then adjust our current year budget for those changes. We found, you know, over the last number of years, that's the easiest way to go rather than trying to, you know, build a new wheel each year. So what I tried to do here on Page Two is show you how we got to the numbers that we have. So I started with the revenue sources. As Jeff mentioned, we get about 73,000 more in tax revenue, based on our assessments and our current tax rate. We've got compost fees, a large increase this year. That's due to two things. One is last year, if you recall, we were looking at the probability, I guess, high probability of actually closing our compost facility because of a new operation up in the Clare area. The Clare area thing didn't work out the way they expected to our benefit. So the $340,000 increase revenue in this year's budget is because last year, we had actually decreased our revenues for the wind down, and that didn't happen. And there's also another 50,000 in this year's revenue because, I believe it's Shelburne, is bringing their compost out to our facility, starting to get it April. So about 290 is due to the wind down from last year, being reinstated, those numbers back in, plus an extra 50,000 from our projections on tonnage coming from Shelburne. So compost facility gained $340,000 in revenue. With our municipal agreements, there's no grants and loos for the school board building, the hospital, I guess not hospital, but the, yeah. So there's a few grant and loos that we don't bill anymore, so we'll have $50,000 left there. The next two items, Lines Four and Five, is just our sewer rate increase, increased revenues there, but we offset it with the decrease in taxes. So with the way the pennies work, little variance, little change in there, but basically they offset each other.
I'm sorry, I don't understand how that works. Would you explain?
So what we've done is we're trying to make our operation on our sewer treatment and sewage collection actually pay for itself, because as you know, in our water bills, there's a sewer rate, sewer charge for that. So we're tracking the sewer charges against our actual operational costs. So we were in a sense, taking money out of general operations to supplement sewer rate. So last year, this year, the next few years, we've been increasing our sewer charges, but we've made the commitment a couple of years ago to the public and the businesses that we would decrease the tax rate. So we're not taking more money from that. So with our projections for this year, change in the sewer rates will gain about $159,000. So we're offsetting with a tax decrease on the rate of 162. We go through the different miscellaneous or sundry revenue things, like tax certificates, all these types of small charges that we have. And we tweak those based on the trends. And there's about 16,000 in revenue that we thought we could budget for that, you know, comfortably. Line Seven is the ferry terminal will gain about $230,000 in revenue, having the ferry terminal leased out and the expenses there. But the caution there is that's basically a wash, because we gain about $230,000 in expenses. So the way the partnership and agreement works on that, the revenue in is basically just a flow-through for us. And I didn't want to start our budget with, last year, if you recall, we used about the possibility of using $275,000 in a transfer from our surplus to balance last year's budget. So you wouldn't want to start with that in this year's budget. So we took that out to get to where we are today. So those things net us about $330,000 in more revenue.
Just a question on the terminal.
Yep.
Now, the ferry terminal, we're partnerships with two other municipal units. That $230,000, is that split three ways?
So at this point, the terminal operations are, it's a flow-through. So we're collecting the money, the town is, and we're paying the expenses. And so any surplus that's there will get reserved and held for that purpose, in the interest of the three partners. But our partnership is not equal three ways. It is, as you know, Argyle has.
That's right.
A 20%, and the other two are in a 40. So the revenues come in, and they pay the expenses directly related to that stuff.
That's right.
So there is no operational subsidy that's going in from the municipal units.
No. This belongs to the town of Yarmouth, the 230.
No.
No?
Well, I mean, it's on our books.
It's on our books.
It's in and it's out.
It's in, okay. Okay, great, thank you.
So really, it nets down to our new revenue is the 73,000 from tax assessments, taxes, and about 340,000 coming from the compost facility. Little spell check rush this morning, so I guess one of our columns got reduced on us. So the next line, Number 10 there, I start to show expense increases. And this first group of increases are things that we have agreements and, you know, very little control on them. They kind of just happen based on contracts and agreements that we have, based on different, I guess, responsibilities the town has. Over time, we can change these things, but basically, you know, these things happen year over year. So I started with, just to make sure, and Councilor Kazig's question there, the first one is, there will be $230,000 more in expenses for the ferry. So as Jeff explained with the ferry, we pay all of the, we collect the revenues and bill for it, so we gain that revenue, but then we pay all the bills related to it. And if there isn't anything left, that money that's left is set aside for the terminal The old high schools was a will to us, and there was $125,000 new expenditures in our budget for that. Our garbage collection contract increased of 29,000. The RCMP contract increased. Now, what we've been able to do in the past few years is we get an estimate from the RCMP on what our charges will be for the year as a full complement of staff in the RCMP. Typically, we've known or know that there's been transfers out, or mat leaves, or different sick leaves, those types of things. So we were, I guess, we mitigated the risk, but we didn't budget the full amount that they said they could charge us. And the last couple of months, the last two bills, they've been at full complement. So we've had to increase our contract expenditures by the 105,000 this year that we felt to be safe in that expenditure. So you'll see this year's actual numbers eventually will show up, that we are a little under budget, or a little over budget, I guess, on that lap line. So put the full contract expense back in of 105. Our depreciation expense adjustment, and I didn't adjust it last year, but based on the additions from the last couple of years and a little bit more information with Pat working on the fixed asset schedule, we need to put in another $97,000 in depreciation expense throughout the budget. Salaries and benefits, again, union contracts, it's about $224,000. Now, I'll explain, there's three positions there. One, that's already been filled, and it's kind of regulatory. It's another operator at the wastewater plant. So we now have three operators there. Last year, when we had two, we'd have one, one was actually on sick leave, and we were working with one operator. And then when we were back to full complement, we hired, they didn't stay long, so we're back to one operator again. And it's safety and regulatory. We can't be down to one operator at that plant. So I guess the solution there, and what we've done, is we now have three operators in the wastewater feeding plant. So when there's vacations, when there's sick time, those types of things happen. We're still meeting our safety regulations and everything that's required down there. Another position, I guess, was that we took a left instead of a right on the building inspector. So we've hired full-time building inspector. We're in last year's plan. We looked at not having our own full-time building inspector and actually firming some, you know, using our partners to do that work for us. So we've got the building inspector's full pay in the budget for her in there. And the third one is on the operational side at the supervisory position. I guess we've tried over the last year or so to run with one less supervisor, and mainly it was a park supervisor. And the operational staff, it's stretched too thin, and things aren't getting done. So in this year's budget, we've reinstated that position. So that, along with all the cost of living allowances and the union contracts, in total, our budgeted expenditures for wages and benefits, up 224,000.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just a quick question for you or Jeff, either one. Natalie's, is her wages in this one there?
Yes, Matt.
And how long is Natalie on a full-time basis or a year-to-year basis?
Well, like every other employee, she's engaged in an employment situation. It's not a term contract.
It's not a term contract.
And her salary was in last year's budget. So this is changes from last year's budget, so it wouldn't actually be in that number because it was last year, it's still there this year.
Okay. I forget what it was. It was in the 70 or 80,000. We budgeted for that or something around there?
We budgeted for her department, 125,000 to hire her and to let her do the work.
And the office, yeah. I wasn't sure which one it was.
So that money is still in this year's budget.
Okay, great, thank you.
The 224 is a change from last year. She and her department were in last year's. Okay? Our wastewater plant, that's basically our water and sewer rates being increased and their usage. So there's about a $28,000 increase in their expenditures. Number 17, the 43,000 represents the clothing expense. New volunteers come in, we're going to need clothing for them. So we've talked to the chief about that. And when we got his initial budgets, we went back to him, said, you know, you've got to find, you know, reduce your budget by some more. And he did, but he was adamant that he needs that money to gear up the volunteers and the new recruits.
Just a quick question on that, and if you know or not now. When they get new recruits, how long do they wait before they're eligible for uniforms or whatever? Do they wait a month, two months, six months before they get a uniform? I would suggest they wait some period of time.
I think they have to. I think John gets them to a certain level of training before they need the gear and actually get in to help with fires.
Yeah, I can see the gear with the fires, but I'm talking to the, like, dress uniforms and stuff like that.
No, no idea myself.
No idea? Do you have any idea, Jeff? Be a good question to ask, I think. When it would come to the $43,000, if you're a new recruit and you're there a month or two months, and then all of a sudden, you know, you get the dress uniforms and you get a work uniform, yeah, okay, great, thanks.
Jerry, in that number, some of that bunker gear, it's the stuff they actually wear when they're fighting the fires, as opposed to just the nice uniform that they get to wear when everything's calm.
We have one left.
Go ahead, Natalie.
Yeah, just out of out of curiosity, just back to Natalie Smith that Danny raised, the 120,000 and change. When that position was created, I was off the understanding that there's going to be some performance standards in place for that. Is that still the case, or has that not happened?
It's, well, it was a new position, so we didn't come into it with a preconceived idea about exactly what she would achieve in the first year. We had ideas, areas that we wanted to work in, and I think she's done that. She has presented to us her plan for what she would do the next year, and I guess we can discuss whether or not there are changes to that plan that we want to see made, and then we can measure performance against that.
Further questions at this point? Okay, so moving right along, we've put in new heritage grants for properties. We've, uh, put in, uh, new heritage grants for properties, and also some extra money in the community balloon budget upon, uh, budget, I guess deliberations, we'll go through those. Uh, the town's own garbage tipping fees, um, for some reason, I think we're, we, we create a little more garbage than we have in the past. I think tipping fees, the tipping fees at the facility have gone up as well. So, that's just our own town tipping fees, our collections. Uh, based on the last few years, saw a need to increase our road salt expense. Uh, increase that budget by 15,000, I think that brings it up to 110, actually. Public works, some, uh, equipment maintenance. Again, that's based on the last three years expenditures, actual expenditures going through there, and taking in consideration, uh, the odd new vehicle that's been, been purchased. Uh, still see a need that, you know, to be comfortable in that budget line and not to be way over. Uh, increase that expenditure by about $20,000. Uh, public works overtime, uh, again, with the, the contracts and with the amount of snow and that, what happens through our winters. Uh, little increase of $10,000 should bring us closer to, uh, an actual number for next year. Uh, 25 is, uh, the skate park in Lost of the Sea. There's typically been some maintenance there, and there's been, hasn't been a budget the last couple of years. Those are relatively new, new parks for us, so just a small amount in there to make sure we take care of the odd thing that happens there. Anything larger will have to end up coming through the parks budget itself. Kilim's Wharf expense increase, there's a fair bit of work and different things that gotta get done down there this year, apparently. So, uh, looking at a $5,000 increase in the operation budget there. Uh, at the Marina, um, had a little theft happen there late last year, so looking at have to replace the, uh, boat motor and possibly the trailer as well. So, Dave's requested $9,000 in that, that expense line. And then our operation, recreational contracts, um, came in at higher than this, um, but I guess we've, uh, we've asked that it be, their, their budget be reduced, and it would still leave with, still leave with their salaries and different things that they will be doing. About a $4,000 increase for the town. So, as you can see, there's, there's a number of things that we are, have to do and really should do, I guess, that are total increases in expenditures from last year, 997,000. Now, before, you know, before we even get to that point, it was a fair bit higher, but we went back to the directors and got them to take everything possible that they, you know, felt they could, take it out. So, again, the chief took more out from his initial requests, and Dave took, uh, close to 200,000 of, from his initial requests. And, but even after those reductions, we're down to $997,000 increases. Question there?
The, uh, the new transit system service, where does that fit in?
The new transit system? Uh, basically, we've had, uh, what we've done is we've had $60,000 in our budget over the last number of years for a transit system. And so, this year, we're looking at, uh, roughly a doubling of that cost in our budget estimates. Uh, but we've looked at, it's not operational yet, and it'll probably be close to six months before we get started. So, if we're looking at, uh, buying buses, hiring, getting that kind of stuff done. So, we left the $60,000 in there, but it's all in the last six months of the year. That's where the transit system is. So, so no increase from last year, just...
So, just for my, I guess I had a call last night, uh, from, um, a senior in Beacon Terrace. So, are we moving ahead on this, or is it kind of in a free zone right now? Like, have we looked at the bus? Have we looked at the system? Like, where are we at on this thing? Because, um, some people are kind of expecting to see a bus on the road in September. Uh, Jerry's now saying six months, so that means December.
No, um, actually, September, October is about six months into our fiscal year.
Yeah.
So, that's still our, our goal. Uh, Caroline has taken over the, the RFP process for the, for bus procurement. And so, we've given her the, uh, the drafts of the RFPs that we've gathered from other municipal units, uh, looking at getting a low-floor, uh, small bus. And so, we haven't, I don't think that's out yet, but we'll, we're in the process.
And I trust Caroline will be respecting the committee's recommendations?
So, expense reductions from last year, what is the next, I can see the reduction is cut off there, but, uh, that's what that's supposed to say. So, we started with the, uh... Yep. These are, these are increases, the word got cut off on me. Yep, and these will be the reductions, so those increases. Well, that got cut off a little bit. So, line 30 starts with our reductions out of last year's budget. Any other questions? Good? So, again, the change from last year's budget, the expense reductions start with, with line 30. And the first line is $40,000. So, we, uh, as you all know, put in LED streetlights, and so our costs to no special power will decrease. Uh, we had budgeted last year a small decrease, because we thought the installation would be completed, and it was completed probably in, uh, late January. We resigned our contracts and paid for things. So, we had seen a little decrease there, uh, but we'll see a further decrease this year, because we'll have the full year effect of it. So, we're comfortable in reducing that expense line by about $40,000. With our agreements and with different things that are going on with the, uh, industrial commission, uh, their budget is indicating that we can, uh, reduce our contribution this year, about $50,000. And they also showed in line 32, a reduction to our medical clinic funding of around $40,000. And with the partnership, that we're, we're probably reducing the Mariner Center funding by $10,000. Uh, the MPS has started, so changed from last year's budgeted amount by reducing that by about $40,000. And then we have, in line 35, there's probably, you know, well, there's more than 20 small tweaks that we've done on different line items, that add up to about $31,000 in reductions. Line 36, uh, last year, there was a, a project that David scheduled and budgeted for there, but it's not there, that has been done, and there's no budget or no project scheduled there this year. So, that was a $25,000 reduction that we could make. We're suggesting, uh, line 37 and 30, 37 is reducing the number of receptacles. I know we budget usually $20,000. Um, Dave's looking at keeping 10, and I think he lets them buy three or four. And he just purchased, I think, some in March, so we'll see a few extra ones around town, even though it doesn't hit this year's budget. Uh, 38 is the, uh, compost equipment expense. Again, where we ramped up there back last year, some of that stuff was done, so we thought we could reduce the expense of the, in this year's budget by about $10,000. Administratively, in line 35, 39, uh, we budget some, uh, computer and hardware replacements each year, but we'll reduce that by about 5,000 for this year. Talked to some people and, uh, staff said we could eliminate the Christmas party if we wanted to. That's about $3,500. Sidewalk repairs. Forever, we've been budgeting about 125,000 in sidewalk repairs, and we, we keep buildings and replacing sidewalks. So, I guess we're comfortable in reducing that budget down to about 100,000 this year from the regular 125.
Jerry, when, uh, when we replace streets or certain parts of streets, are we, uh, also going to be replacing the sidewalks, if there are any there to begin with?
I think the last- The last big projects we have, we've included the sidewalks with those. This is more, yeah, just sections of sidewalk that, with a lot of trip hazards or they're old, they're old paved ones, that we basically dig up and redo.
All right.
But what it does is it just reduces the, the number of feet that you can do each year. We haven't changed the budget number of years. And this year, we're looking at, with all the capital projects going on, that we figured there'd be enough sidewalks being built around those that we can reduce the, reduce the maintenance part of it by 25,000 down to 100. Traffic light maintenance, again, where we just replace them all, uh, to LEDs. Actually, those are streetlights. The traffic lights are actually, Dave, Dave anticipates or tries to budget for two, two major events with the traffic lights. Um, with some of the traffic lights that have been, been fixed or done over the last number of years, he's comfortable with a little persuasion to, to budget one. Streetlight repairs, that's where we have new LED lights in line 43, so we can reduce that expenditure budget down to 15,000.
And you said Dave budgeted for two major, uh, two major incidents with our traffic lights.
Yeah.
Like, say, Jerry, uh, Armor Transport or Midland is turning on, on to, uh, Stair's Road from Cottage or Jody Shelley Drive, and they hit 'em. Is that an, is that an insurance group?
There'd be insurance for those.
But so if they, if they do it at 2:00 in the morning, nobody sees it, then unless they report it, then it's...
Yeah, what, what we budget for and what Dave budgets for is just the, the wear and tear breakdowns, things that happen like, uh, Stars and, I guess Pleasant recently.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, let's say we go over our, our, our budget of two.
Yeah.
Is it two, two, is it two that he budgeted for?
Well, he budgets for two, usually budgets about 50,000.
All right.
Right.
We're over the 50,000, something happens, it's major. Are we going to go, uh, what are we going to, to use in, in, in the, in their stead? Instead of the traffic lights, are we gonna use the stop signs? Because they've worked. They've worked well.
Well, I guess it's like any expenditure, if, if things happen, they have to be done. We get them done, what we don't, you know, we don't say you're over budget, don't do it. We do it, and we'll, you know, try to save money in other areas or...
So, so, so that's what I was talking about earlier, when I talked about our snow removal budget, and trying to manage the amount of risk in the, in the budget. So, in, in these area, or in that particular area, you know, we talked to Dave, and Dave has a, a kind of a, an average number of failures that he's, that he's expecting to experience. And, uh, you know, if he said, oh, we won't have any failures this year, we'd be putting quite a bit of risk in the budget, 'cause we know things happen. Uh, but with two, uh, he feels and we feel comfortable that that's, that we could, that we, we stand a very reasonable cha-chance of staying within the budget. But if, if a third occurrence happens, or if, uh, occurrence is large enough that it puts us over budget, it will get fixed. It won't, we won't wait until April 1st and, and a fresh budget to, to do the work.
Okay, all right.
And we'll say to Dave, find it somewhere else.
So, again, just asking, because the stop signs, they've worked. They've actually worked better than, than the, than the streetlights.
So, back to a few more reductions. Line 44 right down through to 48, those are things that happen in our... In, in our fiscal services, um, debt's being paid down, so there's gonna be less interest expense. At one point, the province of Tomaham and Municipal Auditor, they're, they've, I guess, uh, changed that plan. They're not gonna have one anymore, there'll be no charge to us, so we don't need to budget roughly 12,000 a year for that. Uh, PVSC's budget came in, and our cost to them will be about 40, 60, dollars or less. Education and corrections, a couple thousand dollars less than last year or so. On their million or so, they've reduced it by 2,000 for us. Uh, the last one, line 49, uh, talking with Dave around the Marina, and with the way the budget is and how tight things are, he could say he could, he decided he could not replace lights this year. Typically, he's, over the last number of years, has been trying to buy two to four or five lights and have them replaced down on the waterfront and around the Marina. So, he said he could, with, uh, streetlights going up on, uh, on the south, south end of Main Street and those types of things, he said, well, I could just not do any down around the Marina this year. I'll just start, start that program back up next year. So, that's what we've done there. So, we got total expense reductions of about 380,000, so that combined-
Sorry, Jerry, I, I, I kind of mumbled there, it was, I just wanna make sure I caught that. You are gonna continue finishing the lights on, in South End?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure what you were saying there.
This was the, the Marina lights down around the waterfront. So, and that was basically a replacement program that David had put in. So, with our, uh, revenue increase of 331 and our expenditures increases of 997, and then some further expenditure decreases, we get down to a negative 250, sitting at our budget. And that's what we need to deal with today. So, Jeff and I have come up with a list of suggestions and ideas, page three, to help deal with, with that 250. And we left these out on, on a separate sheet and not included in our budget at this point, because these are, I guess, we felt these weren't really staff decisions to make on these ones. These are ones that council needs to think and decide, and be conscious of those decisions. So, on page three, I guess, ideas or proposed changes that we could make to get this 250 dealt with. So, currently, the waterfront development, uh, we've been granting them about $90,000 a year. And, uh, I think currently, their project being funded through ACOA and the money that they already have, uh, down around Hawthorne Street and working there, right now, and in this last past year, there's been very little expenditures that they've been making. So, if that continues on for another year, we felt that we could reduce that grant right down to $20,000 and look at increasing it in the next year or the future years as necessary, I guess. Questions on that one?
I'm, I'm just gonna wait to get to number six. I just wanted to put my light on, just a conversation on number six, that's all. So, I'll, I'll, I'll wait to, yeah, to explode at number six. Yeah, and a few other ones, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So, we looked at, uh, number two, we looked at, you know, we should increase our compost fees by 2%. That would represent about a $12,000 increase in revenue for the town. Talked about different grants that we give out, and the mayor's been frugal with what she's been spending or giving out as grants the last few years, so we-
Are you using the last one?
I think the last one's still using it.
It's not what I give out. Truth be told, it's not what I give out. But it all goes to a good, they all go to a good place. It's all good stuff.
So, we could reduce that by half, down to $2,500. And number four, we reduce the budget for Frost Park Lights down to 10,000. We've got 15,000 in our, our current situation. Um, and reduce the town Wi-Fi expenditures down, down to 10,000. We have, again, we have 15,000 in there for now. Uh, and that wasn't fully spent this year, we only spent about 5,000 or 6,000.
Yeah, no, I'm not gonna dislo- no, I just, uh, th- this is what it's all about. And, uh, the, uh, the reduction in the, in the Wi-Fi, the, the, you know, that and, and the, the lighting in Frost Park. Now, the lighting in Frost Park, it, it took a beating last year. Did we spend all the money we had in there last year for Frost Park? I mean, that's, that's one of the really beautiful things that we have, along with all of our other beautiful things in town of Yarmouth. But that's one major thing that, uh, I know I was, as a council, I'm a, a person who lives in Yarmouth, very proud of.
Yep.
And, uh, i-if it's gonna, if it's gonna do anything to decrease the, the beautification of Frost Park, then I'm not in favor of that. So, I would just like to know where we are financially with it.
Well, what the, the Public Works Department does with that is they know that the budget last year was 15,000, so they look at what they can do with that money. So, the end result is, you know, outside here, and, uh, I think they're at the point now where, you know, they don't need to buy a lot more lights to do more trees. It's just, uh, fixing and replacing what's already there. So we did do more things last year, increased the number of lights, increased the number of trees lit up, the fence, that kinda stuff. So I don't, I think, you know, with 10,000, they should certainly be able to duplicate what was, what was there last year.
Okay, okay, well, I'm good with that. Now on the, uh, we're getting down to, to, to the Wi-Fi. We had some discussion on that last year, I think with the waterfront development, that we took some money and had out of there to, uh, not, not to do it, but this day and age, people that do come to Yarmouth, tourists and what, what have you, they're looking for spots that they can, you know, access their computers. I know, we, we all probably do, not me so much because if I, I go to that home, that's it. If I don't can access it there, it ain't no good to be anywhere else. But there's a lot of people that do. So where are we with the, with the Wi-Fi? I know we've been beating this around for the last three or four years and then a few years, yeah, five or six before, before, before this council. So where are we with that, Jeff, or, or do you know?
There's been three installations that I know of this year because I have to call, uh, Bell or East Link or whoever. There's been one in Beacon Park, so there's Wi-Fi in there now. There is another one installed down on the waterfront, I think down by the clock tower down across from the, uh, Tim Horton's there. And there was one at the skate park as well. So, but it is used, it is a good thing. I mean, I, you know, when you work here in the evenings, I'll often see two or three cars parked on the street. And they're there.
So i- i- if I go down to a girl's street, can I access it?
I'm not sure what the range is out of the skate park, but that's, that would be the.
Can I access it at the, um, at the, uh, we'll say the Hair Hut down on the corner of Albert and Main? Can I access it there? Can I access it at Milton Farm?
The center town area was done a couple of years ago.
I just like to, I wanna know the range. I, I think it was pretty much just the down core, if I'm not mistaken, Jeff, now that I really think about it.
Originally, yeah.
So, so the project at the Waterfront Development Corporation, within their COA project, I think there was something in the area of $75,000 for new Wi-Fi installations. And so, uh, Steve Goldring and Dave Warner, uh, and James Hattie have worked on, uh, you know, how to deliver Wi-Fi. Obviously, you can't do the entire town, but picking spots where people gather and, uh, and putting in Wi-Fi hotspots. In addition to that, we've of course got the project through Heritage to do the Heritage app. And so there will be a number of, of, uh, Wi-Fi, hotspots, I guess you call them, that will go through the Heritage Conservation District so people can use that app when that's available. That money is, the, the, uh, the Heritage money is all supposed to be spent by the end of July and the waterfront development, uh, money, uh, probably by June, I'm thinking. So you'll see a number more installations now that spring is here.
That's good. I, I was listening to a, a program, it was an American program, where they have, where they don't have Wi-Fi and they use public, public buses to put the antennas, whatever, on them to in different, in different places that they, then it's accessible. Have we gave that any thought? I don't know how we could do it or what kinda vehicles we could use to do it with, but it, it, it's pretty much an easy fix. There, uh, you can put them in any places that you want, right? Just a thought.
Yeah, no, we, uh, we haven't looked at the buses because we don't have a bus yet.
No, I realize that.
But, uh, you know, that's an idea that we might put Wi-Fi on, on the transit bus when we do have it, just as a, as a convenience to people. But that idea, I did hear about that from a number of sources that they used in that.
They were fixed, they were fixed, like we'll say, they didn't use the buses on the weekends, so. And, and the rural communities, they, they put buses in, in different places where they had the capability that people would be able to get the, uh, get the Wi-Fi with that, with that bus.
So to come back to the budget question here, this is not on the capital side, this is on the operational side. And so the, the number that we've inserted there is based on, based on our experience and what we think our operational cost will be this year. Obviously, that will go up next year as, as more hotspots are installed and we're paying for internet for, for number more spots. But there's, there's no intention here to, to reduce or pull back on that initiative. We understand that people appreciate it and Jerry's quite right, you can come by Frost Park or Town Hall, just about any evening, see a vehicle parked out front with somebody using, using a, a device in it.
Now, there's one more. We're getting to defer new transit system to next year. That, that to me is a big.
And, and we know that.
A big double no.
We know that. So all that we're trying to do with this
They show us.
Is just show you where some of your options are. And I would actually even, I mean, consider the idea that look at what the, what, where the areas are and don't focus so much on the numbers, look at where all the areas are. What I said before Jerry got into the numbers is you're kinda down to the discretionary areas in terms of what you, where you're gonna find your money. And, you know, whether it's, it's 15 from here or 20 from there or 20 from here and 15 from there, those kinds of decisions are, are value decisions that I think you guys have to give us some direction on or we're asking you to help give us some direction on those. And, and we will, we'll make the numbers work, however, I mean, based on where your priorities and your values are. And, uh, our goal is to just to reach a, reach a balanced budget. But we found it very difficult, and this is one of the things we found perhaps most difficult in the process is when we realized that we can't find the money in, in the areas where, where, you know, in equipment maintenance or in snow removal or, or, you know, those, those areas are exhausted. We get down to areas like, you know, these discretionary areas and, you know, it's, it's hard for us to, to guess where councils more inclined to want to make those, those reductions. And, and so we're kinda guessing and, and it's best that you have that discussion, give us some kinda guidance.
Saying that, saying that, um, the, the Christmas dinner, that, that's gone, that's gone, that's, that's fine. But you're, you've got, reduce the mayor's grants to $2,500, reduce it to zero would be, would be more favorable. You know, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm thinking because you, you can't say, I'm not gonna feed you, but if you come to me for a grant, I might give you a grant and to buy some baloney or something, who knows? So, I mean, look at it that way would be, would be better. I mean, better for me. I mean, the, the, the mayor's grant was just put in when his, his nibs was mayor over there. But anyway, but anyway, so. No, that's right, no, that's, I, I. Yeah, I apologize, that's right, Ted Crosby had it. But don't get too upset, I just, you know, but anyway, that's, that's, I, I, I thought it was, but when I think about it, it was, uh, Mayor, Mayor Crosby had that fund in there. And that came along with the, uh, the allotment of, uh, vehicles and all the other good stuff back, way back then, I think, when Crosby was there. Either was or wasn't. Have we looked at, at, at anything like that?
So, so when the ma, I'll, I can address that because I was, I was here when, when that was established and I can tell you what the mayor's fund was initially for. We get a number of requests that come in, uh, and they come in kinda monthly or whatever, what's, you know, uh, I'll just pick on one, it's, it's.
I've been here for 12 years too.
This is a complete fabrication, this is not an actual case, but, you know, the Girl Guides come in and they need $100 for some initiative on the weekend or, or Minor Hockey's having their provincials and they want a $100 ad in their program. And it's in two weeks' time. If that doesn't coincide with the council meeting and it's $100, the thought of the day was, why don't we give the mayor the discretion to be able to do those small things and, and satisfy those, those groups in the community rather than having to come back on a council agenda and sometimes miss those opportunities? So that was, that was the reason for it initially.
But i- i- in all fairness, when you do stuff like that, and this is a political game, game, and when you mention just the mayor is gonna be doing this, it's unfair to the rest of the councils. I, I take it that way. No, I, I realize that, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just telling you how I feel about it. And, and if we're playing political games here, one should be spearheading the political game, that's all I see it. And it was way back in Crosby's times and this time. So is it fair way back then? No, is it fair now? No. So if, if we're, if we're eliminating the Christmas dinner, we should really consider eliminating that. And we also have, there's money left over from the grants organization, isn't there? There, there, there was, there was.
Okay, uh, may I answer the question?
Yeah, go ahead.
You'll see in, in line 13, reduce the grants organizations by another $5,000. We reduced it by 2,500 last year. So it was 77,000 last year, reduce it down to 72 this year.
Okay.
So that's where that sits.
Yeah, no, I'm done.
That's okay. Just a, a general comment, first about Danny's, uh, thought about the mayor's fund. I, I would be, like to support that, but I might rename it to something else other than just the mayor's fund. Secondly, um, I look at, my overall comment in attempt to reach close to a balanced budget. They've, I know that Jerry and Jeff have gone through hell trying to get to this point. The reduction in the activity of by $70,000 for the YDC, just a, a general comment, um, I, I want to make sure, Jeff and Jerry, that we can keep our volunteers and keep them active and proactive. So we're gonna have to go to great effort to make that kind of work. The, the, uh, the other point I wanted to make was in regard to the budget surplus of $60,000 does not reflect a, a one cent increase in the residential. That's other considerations on the bottom part of the page.
Yeah, if you like, I can just whip through the rest of the page and then we can go into a general discussion if that's easier.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay.
And just, uh, the follow up with Council McKaisak. Notice the town of Windsor significantly cut their grants organizations this year by half. I think they're in about the same, and I don't know what's Windsor population wise, in 4,000, 5?
Yeah, not even.
I think they're in about the same region as us, is $80,000 and they cut their grants organizations in half to 40 this year. So, uh, that's another process, I think, that we're gonna have to look at grants organizations and how we, how we, because I think the premise was when the grants organization started was to give them seed money to, to, to get them up and going and get them self-sufficient. But we're getting the same organizations for the same amount year after year. Now, we have to look at, uh, we went, I think, one of the first Federation of Canadian Municipalities meetings we went to then was the, um, ones for the arts, right? Taking 1% of your total budget and giving it to the arts, right? Arts, arts-related organizations. And I think that's something that Council McKaisak stated five or six years ago. And I know there's others around the table that like to put the YARC in as a line item, uh, overall. So they could have a consistent, stable funding because, um, from year to year or council to council, it's gonna be different. So how we do our grants organizations and the amount that we put in there is gonna have to be looked at. And I don't know, uh, we might, might almost have to do it, um, line by line because we have things that affect the town of Yarmouth, like when you talk about the shark scramble or the tuna tournament in Wedgport that have, uh, it's a big event in Wedgport or that kayak symposium that I didn't realize how big it was, but they came, uh, there, there was no supporting documentation that came with that, that kayak symposium. And if I hadn't talked to Council, or former Council Mackenzie at Yestha one day, I didn't realize how big that was. And nobody, nobody told me, right? They just said, see, see kayak symposium? And they had a number in there, I didn't realize how many people are brought in. So I think, and I said it last year, I think we're gonna have to get Natalie involved and I know they're hiring a new person in the municipality of Yarmouth and they already have one in place in Argyle. And look at our events and our organizations and go big. Like when we're talking about, uh, funding events like CFAS, the tuna tournament, uh, the whole gamut, they get a million dollars for an event list in Cape Breton that I don't think is impressive as our event list. So that's something that, you know, I said it two or three times, but, um, you know, it's a good, this is a, a good start, but, um, the transit's gotta be up and going. I think that's, I think that's the key to this year's budget.
It's, it's a good, it's a good start, but the grants to organize, you're right. And we need to sit down and we need to put that package together for what we have, but we have, we have to do it. We can't just talk about it, and I know you mentioned it a couple of times. But when we sit here and, and constantly, year after year, give out money to the same, not that the same organizations aren't great, but I remember asking, I asked Tripa, do you need this money? And they said, no, and we still give it to them. That's, that just doesn't ring right with me.
And I think one thing Council Darris, when she, she was at the table, she really looked at the financials. We had, we have, we had a couple of organizations coming in here that had a million dollars in the bank or, or in excess. Were looking for money.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, because they didn't wanna tap in, didn't wanna tap into their, uh, into that money, right? They wanted to, to use the interest off of that money, but they had a million dollars coming to ask us for 5,000 or 6,000 or even this last grants organization, we had another organization came in that was funded through the provincial government that had money for taxes. He stated, we get money for taxes, but we don't wanna use that money for taxes. We want to develop another program. And I bet you if you go back to Community Services who did that budget and approved that budget, if they went back and said, we got money from the town of Yarmouth to cover our taxes, next year, they're gonna be looking for another 5,600 because they won't be approving that part of their budget.
Yeah. So how do we, so how do we do that? Don't, don't leave yet. I don't care, sit down. We're gonna discuss how we do this.
Yeah, no, so if, if the question is how do you review the amount that you give to grants organizations and maybe your policy? You're, you're required to set that amount in the fiscal year prior to the giving. So this year, uh, you know, we get through this process and we can, we can put on one of our agendas, just a, a discussion. We can do a little look around at other municipalities, how they do their grants organizations and have, have a good conversation about how much do you wanna put in? And maybe you want some policy around where it, where it goes, what, what your criteria are.
So this isn't, this isn't the taxes that we get, right? This doesn't include, you know what I mean, at the bottom of that sheet?
That's right.
We give everybody their taxes?
Right. So, and again, you, we can, we get clear of this process and we can have a, uh, sort of focused discussion on that.
Okay, okay. Council, handle?
I think Jerry suggested that we listen to him because, um, and finish this whole, his discussion before we get into it. So I'm kind of respecting that, your honor.
So again, just to kinda reiterate what Jeff had mentioned, that what's on this list are discretionary things. There's a couple of new items from this year's budget that are in there, but we may reconsider given the constraints. And these are things that, you know, Jeff and I know that some of them are near and dear to your hearts, but they are things that you could decide to defer or put off. So we are at number six and I'll just, I think we're all familiar with that one now, it's the transit system. It is a $60,000 expense and it's in the budget, but it's there that, you know, your, your decision. Number seven, I do wanna explain that one. Again, kinda like the sewer, we look at our garbage, um, collection, costs, mainly the contract and then also tipping fees and that kinda thing that we pay. And we look at the cost of all that and compare it to, um, the fee that we charge. So right now, we charge $155. So I guess what we're looking at is with the $30,000 increase in our collection contract and then just a little bit of falling behind from prior years, looking at a rate increase up to $180. So it'd be a $25 per household, uh, increase on the garbage rate.
How, how much a household?
$25, so it's at 155 and we bump it up to 180.
Oh, I see, I see.
Okay, and, uh, so that $25 generates the $70,000 needed to, to bring back or bring in line our, our revenue with the expenses on that. So there, there's not a suggestion of a one or two cent increase in taxes, but there is a suggestion that we increase the garbage rate to make sure we cover those expenditures.
And that's, and that's cost recovery, right, Jerry?
That's, we look at it as a cost recovery, similar to what we're doing with our sewer.
And, 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 yeah, we got stuck behind the sewer thing a couple of years ago, right? And I think what we have to bring to the forefront, and I wish Tina or Kevin Northwood was here because you're gonna pay for it one way or another. And I wanna see a budget that's presented that is actual and factual. I wanna see that if you're. I want to see that if you're, it was like the sewer, you know, we were subsidizing the sewer. I want to know that if I'm paying for a garbage rate, that covers that cost to get the garbage from my host of the curb, curb to the truck, and the truck to the transfer station or wherever it goes, right? I don't want it buried in, because you want to see the true cost of what municipal government costs, right? And to be subsidizing that, that's gonna be on a cost recovery basis, and that has to be said to the public time and time again, like when we, when you read the budget, Your Worship, in May or June, that has to be brought out. It's not, it's not, it's not, even though there's only one taxpayer, it has to be said that this is a cost recovery, and we can't be going, again, just to be subsidizing on the taxpayers' backs because, you know, there's commercial, there's residential, there's all kinds of different variances there, but we want to make sure that the citizens knows that if it's a hundred and eighty dollars a year to pay for garbage removal, it's a hundred and eighty dollars, that's what it costs.
Yeah.
We're not making money on it.
I agree.
So, number, number eight, that is an increase in, from last year's budget, so it's there for consideration, and number nine is, and I guess these things are on the list because we've already talked with staff and the directors about reducing their budgets as much as they can. So, if we further reduce the Marina budget, or number ten, parks expenditures, those, you would, you would notice a difference in the level of service. So, that's, we've kind of tried to keep the service level as consistent as we can with last year, but we've made all the different adjustments on the budget that we could. There is money there that we could reduce in the parks budget, but you would notice a difference in the service level, so that's why it's on this list for your consideration. The YMCA funding, I guess we just figure that since everyone else is feeling the pinch that we could, you could, could reduce their funding by four thousand, and they still would get fifty-five from the town. The recreation budget as well, it's bringing it down fifteen thousand, our share down by fifteen thousand, so our share would still be two hundred and eighty-two thousand. There hasn't been any real big, big request to Frank on that one before. Thirteen, mention the grants to organizations, and fourteen, again, that's a new, a new line item for this year, so for your consideration if you really wanted to do that.
Councilor Dawes?
Thank you, Your Worship. Jerry, could we go back to number twelve?
Yep.
What all do, what all does the budget cover for recreation? I don't recall unless, unless, unless it was one of those three, three council meetings that I've, that I've had to miss over the last year, that they came and, and did their, did their financials, that showed us their balance sheet, where, what they use, where the money goes. I don't know where, where the money goes through to recreation, I don't know what we, what we finance.
So, Frank does, puts together his operational budget with his committee, and basically they've come in with a budget close to six hundred thousand dollars this year, and we get information that our, our share of that is half. So, we're at two ninety-seven now, but what does Frank do with the money? I mean, he has staff and facilities that they, they take care of, but they run summer programs as well.
They do great work, they do.
Yep.
They do. I've just never seen, I've just never seen exactly what we finance.
So, we need, you want a copy of the budget? Is that possible?
I'm sure it is. I've gotten, I guess, some notes from Frank on what it's, what it is, and that's why, I guess, Jeff and I review, we figured we, you know, you could ask for a reduction, but...
But we don't, we don't know.
We didn't get the full budget.
I don't know what we would, sorry.
That's okay.
I don't know what we would be chopping here off of their programs.
Just second there, Dean.
No, take your time.
We might not be chopping anything. Might be causing user fees to increase, might cause them to make some different decisions around some of their, some of their overhead costs. We're not, we're not suggesting to them how to drive the bus, we're suggesting to them that they just make it a little tighter.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just for your, your information, Councilor Dawes, committee members like myself, and he did give a presentation here, but committee members, when you go to the meetings, you, he goes through the list of, here's wants and his needs, and he always asks us for, you know, support from councils and stuff, which I am part of the recreation committee along with all the other committees that we do sit on, there are budgetary, you know, workshops that, that they have at their meetings, and they go through the budget items there, so any council can get any budget from any committee, I'm sure, from the chair or Jeff or the finance department. But going back to, on number twelve, Jeff, on, on the fifteen thousand dollars, I know that there were some wants there, Councilor Mooney can, can verify this, that, that Jeff, that Frank was looking for in, in equipment and stuff, so when you say raise rates and raise this and raise that, is it still time to do all this? Do you know the raise rates for, for different programs that they have, or are we in the midst of that now, or is it too late to say, well, we're not gonna give you the fifteen thousand, well, we haven't decided, we haven't decided that yet, but the fifteen thousand dollars might be that new tractor, new whatever that they wanted to do, or that new whatever they wanted to do for recreation, buildings or maintenance, whatever. There's a lot of work as being a ex-director yourself, you know how things work and that, and, and now you're, you're sitting where you're sitting, and you always have to look for all your departments to cut, I understand that. But recreation, being a member of the board and being, knowing the wants and the needs and knowing how tight things are, and the really good work that Frank and his, his committee and that, not committee members so much, but his staff do, I would be a bit hesitant, but that's just my opinion.
So, if council decided they would do, make all these changes, we'd have a further reduction of three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. We needed two fifty, so that would give us a sixty thousand dollar surplus. So, that's no commercial or residential tax rate increase, okay? But that also allows you to put, well, coincidentally, sixty thousand dollars or not, not make sixty thousand dollars of those changes, and still have a three hundred and seventy-nine dollar surplus. So, I guess, I did also want to point out in below, other considerations, we did use, we did budget to use a surplus account last year to help balance the budget, and we do have money in there, but I guess, you know, I'd caution making that a habit, because it does run out eventually, and, you know, balanced budgets are the way to go. We can increase taxes, or you could increase taxes, and again, I just wanted to show you what one cent will do on the residential or commercial rate there, and, or three, there might be other discretionary types of expenditures that you want to further reduce. So, discussion points.
Well, I think, I can't speak for all the council, but number six, that transit, I don't know if anybody's in, in favor of deferring that.
Did you say it could be furthered?
I said, I don't think anybody's in favor of deferring that.
Okay, so, if you put that in, then in order to balance the budget, you have to do the rest, or use surplus account, or raise taxes to do it at this point, or reduce, or find other discretionary stuff that you want to do.
Okay. Deputy?
Your Worship, just to get discussion started, I would be in favor of the, of the, what Jerry and Jeff have presented to us, plus a one cent, a one cent increase in the residential and commercial tax rate. So, the proposed changes I'd be supporting at this point, and plus the one cent increase, both commercial and residential.
Councilor Mooney?
Good work, Jerry and Jeff. I'm not in favor of the tax increase, because if we learned anything by our financial indicators, we were exceeding or above almost in all the indicators except for family or household income, we were last, and that says to me, we have to base our tax rate on the ability to pay. So, even a cent commercially or a cent, I'm trying to actually, trying to figure a way to get our commercial rate down, to make it more attractive for businesses to set up, not only on Stairs Road, but in the downtown. And with, and with the town's task force, and that's the question we asked Jamie Bailey the other day, with the town's task force, there's gonna be more opportunities and more levers to pull or push, as Jeff always is inclined to say, to have that ability to let businesses do business, but I think a tax increase at this time is saying the wrong thing. I think we're gonna have to look within again. I think the grants to organizations is, is another possibility, you could do that. I know Windsor did it significantly, and we're gonna have to explain to some of the organizations that have come year after year, like one of the best presentations I like every year is Dave from the Fireman's Museum. I know Dave's been put in a hard spot with, with, because of falling, people coming through the doors, that, that's how he's funded, but it's gonna have to be that we're gonna have to make some real tough decisions this year, but I'm not in favor of a tax increase either residentially or commercially.
I can just make a quick comment. A couple things that I want to mention, because I did hear discussion around them at different times this morning. This, this is changes from last year's budget, so still in there are, is the three hundred and five thousand that you give out for tax relief to the different organizations, like hospital libraries, those organizations that you do that, so that's still there. And with the sewer rate changes, what that's done, I explain that it's a reduction of taxes and an increase in the sewer rate, but as far as the tax rates go, what that does, and again, we're not, we're not saying this is a tax reduction because we're increasing the sewer charges, but the actual physical rate that we'll be charging in this proposed budget is, would be a dollar seventy-one for residential, so that's three cents down from last year, and four thirty-nine for commercial, which is six cents down from last year. So, that's the offset from the sewer, so I'm not in any way suggesting it's a big tax decrease this year because we're increasing sewer rates, that's just the offset, but I want you to know those numbers. Okay?
Yeah. Say, can you say that again?
Yep. In, in the first page, I talked about increasing the sewer rates and what the revenue that would generate for us, so back on page, back on page two, line items four and five, so we have a sewer rate increase, so the projected revenues generated from that rate increase on the sewer side is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. So, our offset, and we've gone through the calculations to see where that one fifty-nine comes from, whether it comes from commercial use or residential use. So, we take that increase in the sewer rate and equate that back to a reduction in the tax rate for those users. So, what's going on, what happens now this year is, in this budget and in this proposed budget, is that the residential property tax rate would go down by three cents to offset the residential increase in sewer rate. So, the residential rate would be one seventy-one, and it was one seventy-four last year, and the commercial rate to offset the increase in commercial sewer increases would be a six cent reduction, so it'll go down to four thirty-nine from the current four forty-five.
So, how is that?
Or two, and other considerations, what does the one cent residential increase, does that, that factor into what you just said at all, or is this over and above what you're...
No, we're not suggesting, I guess, you're looking at the other increase, other considerations?
Yeah.
No, those, those would be new and in addition to what we're presenting today.
Thank you.
Okay. So, those rate decreases are in the budget, but our sewer increase is in the budget as well. Okay.
Councilor Dennis?
I'm in favor of the budget changes except for number six with the, to defer the transit system to next year, and I'm not in favor of raising either residential or commercial taxes.
A lot of this kind of, looking at this today, Your Worship, kind of takes me a little off guard. Deputy Mayor McLeod said, we gotta think about our volunteers, and we've got to think about, you know, what they do around the table in our various committees, and I'm looking right now at a couple of really disappointed committees. Item eight, I'm assuming the recommendation is that we would not be going with the Communities in Bloom National Symposium in 2018, is that, that's the kind of message I'm getting, because that amount was for Kamloops, where they're gonna be discussing, so, and plus our staff has not put in what we're suggesting, an amount of money for 2018, I think we need to decide soon, because I'm wasting a lot of time, and so is our committee negotiating with Communities in Bloom. And what really sickens me on this is this, not this council, but a previous council had no problem sending a dog and pony show out to B.C. to get the World Junior A, which basically brought the same number of people and the same revenue to our community. So, hockey, obviously, has got a higher priority again than the arts, so I, I just want to know what council thinks. If council's saying, don't do it, let's not do it, but it really annoys me that once again, athletics is taking a priority in this town over the arts, and that's a real bugbear for me, because here we have an opportunity to have an international organization come in here for an international conference that could bring in close to seven hundred delegates that we've been working on for a year, and that's gone. And that's, I find that very disappointing, but that's no problem. I'm also annoyed that the Heritage Grant Program has been reduced, and we've spent a lot of time on that. You know, it wasn't even cutting it back, it was just getting rid of it altogether. So, I mean, they're two little items, it's twenty-two thousand dollars. On the transit system, I'm like everybody else, I definitely want to see it go, but I noticed in Halifax for the CAO and for Jerry, I noticed in other areas, they have a transit fee, a surtax attached. In other words, they have a special tax that's on the tax rate for transit. In other words, every resident pays a percentage to assist or a certain fee to assist in transit, and we are gonna be offering transit at a very low rate. I'm just wondering why we can't do the same. I mean, again, I know the transit buses aren't athletes, we did it for the Mariners Center, we, as I said, the, I think we should change the priorities of the town so that we're only an athletic center, shut down all the arts communities, and let's just become Jock City, and I'm serious, I'm seriously annoyed about the Communities in Bloom Conference, that really bothers me, because we in faith were into this, and now it's gone. However, that being said, why can't we put a fee on transit? I mean, I know we've lost the battle on the CIV, and I know we've lost the battle on the Heritage Grants, and I know our committees are not gonna be happy about that.
It's over, yeah?
Well, it's over. I mean, that's, four people said around the table a few minutes ago that they're fully supporting the cuts, so it's over, from my books, and that's including the mayor, so, toast. So, anyway, the bottom line, the bottom line, they're gone, so from what I'm seeing, we go with this and cut everything else, but what I'm saying also is the message that we're giving, is we're not gonna do anything new, except for putting some buses on the street. That's basically, we're not gonna do anything new, and I think this is a really, here, some of us are saying, moving forward, and here, some of us are saying, we gotta do this and gotta do that, so we have committees sincerely who are working on something new, which are very inexpensive projects, that could bring in, in fact, the number eight, I joke about, this is like the film Credit Tax. Here you have a twelve thousand dollar expenditure that could bring in over a million dollars in revenue into our town. Now, I'll bet you dollars to donuts, if Mitch Bonner came and sat in that seat today with Wayne Hamilton beside him, and asked you guys for thirty thousand dollars to go out to Kamloops because they're gonna get the Junior A, oh my God, this is wonderful, Keith, let's cut the check. He's gonna get it, he's gonna walk out the door. But here we have a group of unnamed volunteers who sit around a table who've worked for the past year to bring a major event to Yarmouth, oh, I'm sorry, it's not hockey, doesn't work. But good news, we were gonna use the Mariners Center, and we were gonna pay for it, so anyway, that's all I'm gonna say.
So, first of all, I wasn't under the impression that this was a done deal. So first of all, I wasn't under the impression that this was a done deal.
Thank you, your worship. Well, I never took account, I know I'm not, I'm not solely for this. I'm not going to see who is and who isn't, but I think that we should have a little bit more discussion around this. But Jeff, that's not a bad idea, the transit. I mean, we, we had that came, it is a tax, but it's not a, it's a, it's a user tax. And we had a tax, I think it was, was it 11 or 15 percent when I sat around the table, that we levied for capital projects? And we rolled it in. Then we rolled it in, or they rolled it in after I got booted out into, into general tax. So this is not a bad idea. What percentage would it take to bring that up to 60 or 100,000? What are we looking at in cents?
Well, it depends on how you do it. If you did a tax that would be based on the assessment, then one cent on, on your commercial and residential rate generates $40,000. If you didn't like the garbage fee, that is, solid waste fee, then that is, that is allocated based on the household, and that doesn't hit the commercial side at all. Or you could, you could pick some other basis. So you have two things that you can, that you can use on your assessment. You have the assessed value, and you have residential dwellings.
Yeah.
And you can apply a flat fee per residential dwelling.
I think it's, it's services, sorry to interrupt you, Jeff. But I think it's service, services both, residential and commercial. They both would gain on this. I think it's a great idea, I think it's a good idea, and I'd be willing to support that. We're not even giving it a lot of thought, supporting the other one to build the Mariners Center at that time. And you, and you see what we have out there. Now this, this, this transit system, and this way of paying for it, I think it's a, it's a great idea. And not only that, but in the future for putting on more things. It's a service that the town is supplying, whether they use it or whether they don't use it. I would suggest that the majority of the people would use it. And if you're paying through it in your taxes, it's, it doesn't hurt as much, I don't think. I really don't. But it's something to look at, I think we should look at that. Just my thought. And far as the, the Kamloops trip and the CIB, I mean, I went to the one in P.E.I., and I thought that was grand. I mean, when you, when you drove into P.E.I., you knew that there was activity going on there with Communities in Bloom. I think it's a, it's a real good organization. I know that you have to put these, these figures down, and it's, it's just an exercise that we're going through, and everybody has their kick at the can. That's what you get the big bucks for. I respect all what you put there and all the hard work. And these are, these are decisions that's going to be made around this table. And I'm not for deleting the Kamloops trip. I'm not in favor of diluting, diluting, deleting, deleting the transit. But all the other ones, I'm, I can live with them. I really can live with them. I can live in the increase, the 2 percent. I can reduce in the reduction. I can, all the other ones, I don't have too much of a problem, except for the increase in, in this particular tax, tax. And if it's, there's nothing, nothing into it for the public, if they're going to get the ride on the big blue bus, I think that would be great. I don't have any problem, you increase my taxes, I would encourage you to increase my taxes, to do that.
Just so I'm clear. So your idea is to basically increase residential and commercial by a penny to generate roughly $40,000 to offset? Okay, that's what I'm trying to ask.
What I'm suggesting is, Counselor Landell had made a suggestion that in Halifax, that they had a tax for bus uses. And how they derived to get that tax, and how they, how they spread it out for everybody, I don't know how they done that. I just said, that might be an exercise we should look at. But in, in increasing our taxes on this way, no. But if it's to get something, and the public gets something, other than the services that they already get, this is something, another service that they're going to get. It's a, it's a transit service. And that's what I'm looking, if you, if you look at a percentage, we have to raise for that, or look into it, I'd be, you know, not hearing about it, I, I would be in favor of it if you, if you was to present it.
But some way to generate another $60,000 in revenue then?
You good, Jerry?
Well, I think so. I'm just looking at this, this list then, so if we're looking at another way to generate $60,000 in revenue for the transit system, then you would still have $60,000 on the bottom line that you could use for things, if you so desired. That's what I'm just trying to keep straight in my head.
Without having to touch surplus?
Right. And surplus is there too. Yeah. Yep. So right now, with, with everything, again, there was a $60,000 surplus. So if you're looking at another revenue generator, there'd be a bigger surplus, so you could put more stuff back in. Okay?
Okay, good?
Okay, the, well, let's put it into perspective, though. You're saying a $60,000 surplus, but the reality is, your budget is cutting $60,000 over the transit system, so you really got a $379 surplus, is what reality is. Okay? So we're only looking at a $379 surplus if we creatively keep the bus system in. So we have 379 to spread over the other amounts, which is kind of scary. The idea of putting in a transit service fee, whatever you want to call it, and spread it across the community with residential and commercial rates, I mean, the reality is, the people that are going to benefit from our transit system will be both residential and commercial users. The businesses will have people going to their places, the residences will have an inexpensive system. The system is set up to be a bargain. I mean, I was talking at length with, again, a lady from Beacon Terrace last night. I mean, when you look at the rates, you're going to be able to travel virtually all day long for $3, and Jeff can correct me on the fees, a week, I think it's $15 a month, you're looking at $50, in a year, you're looking at $500. And that is the bargain of the century, considering that the previous person was averaging, and I explained this to the lady last night, counting subsidy, about $9 a trip, if you counted our contribution, and you looked in the contribution that they were putting on the door. So basically, we're offering one heck of a service every half hour for $6 per trip less, so we're eating a fair chunk of change in this. However, to operate a service of this level, I think it's going to cost money, and I'd hate to see that come out of general revenues. And I would love to see us, you know, put a fee in place. I'm totally opposed to a residential tax increase, I agree with Phil. We've got some of the lowest incomes, and people don't believe me, walk the streets and see some of the residences that people are living in, and some of the situations they're in, because I'll tell you, it's, it's not a, it's not a pretty picture. But on the other hand, Jerry, if you put a rate in place of about three and a half cents, I don't know what it would be, on the residential hypothetically, or three and a half cents budget, cross-budget, there's your transit system paid for, or at least the $60,000 that you're looking at. And that's a supplementary transportation tax, or a transportation fee that's in place. And I see this as no different as service than your sewage fee and your water fee, it's an essential service that we're providing, and you're putting it outside of the regular budget, and people can see it. And frankly, I know if I was a residential taxpayer, and I realized I'm paying so many pennies more, I'd bloody well use the thing. I want to get some value bang for the buck, I'd be more tempted to hop on the bus, saying, well, I'm going to get my money out of this thing, if worse comes to worse. And that's exactly what we want. We want a system that's going to be well used. So, I mean, that's a way to generate funds, and I think it's something that we should look at, not only to break even, but also maybe to put us financially in a fairly position, a good position. Yes, it's going to mean extra money on our tax bills, but the reality is, we're giving a dime in service.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and just to get back to the Communities in Bloom budget, I don't like that refer, I don't like the Kamloops trip. I think it's more of a Kamloops, it's not a trip, it's, it's, we're selling our community, right? And... Actually, when we went... We went to Charlestown, and Counselor McCasick was there with his wife, and Counselor Landell was there, but when we were sitting there in the convention center at the hotel, and they went through the booths, like Kamloops brought 12 or 13 people down, including the mayor, C and all the big corporate sponsors, Scotts, like Turf Girl and all those guys, and we had the best booth at the, at the trade show. We were the best. Kamloops spent, I dare to say they spent between $50,000 and $100,000 bringing people down here to set up that booth. Week, week-long hospit, booths, that's right, booths, plural. I think this is a bargain. I think if we take, I would even suggest take, cut the grants to organizations again by 12,000, and reinstate that to Communities in Bloom, because that is, the work that Communities in Bloom has done over the last four or five years has been excellent. Anything from the compost giveaways, to the planter sessions, to the community cleanups. We have a very active, 10 to 12 people on that committee that have been very active and very supportive, with the two Daves, Martha Cassidy, you know, right through the piece, they've been really, really, really proactive, you know. Some of the ideas even for, you were talking about the lights in Frost Park, that came out of an idea from Communities in Bloom. So you sit there at a meeting, it's not, it's not a real, you know, Robert's Rules of Order, it's a really give and take. I've, I've went to other places, somebody will say, I saw this, I saw this. Like just this week, we were shared a flower garden from Australia, one of the members saw this, and it was very cost-effective, said this might be something somewheres in the town of Yarmouth that we could look at. So I think getting those people into town, because we're going to sell this community, and the people coming from, in Charlestown, they were from Korea, Italy, right across, Japan, yeah, Ireland, I think Denmark, there's somebody there from Czechoslovakia, I believe. So I think this, I think this is an important component, not, you know, just, just for this year. I know we're going to have to put some money in it for the next couple of years, but this has the opportunity to generate a couple million dollars in revenue for our merchants in the, in the town of Yarmouth, and I think it's an important aspect of this budget, and I think it's something that we should look forward to, because I think this would be the first time ever that an event of this size was held in a city or community smaller than Charlestown. Usually they're big cities like Quebec, Edmonton, Ottawa. So Charlestown was the smallest at that time, and they actually looked at Yarmouth and think it might be a great opportunity to market, and to share with some of the other people, because I don't want to steal the counselor's thunder over there, but we work with a group here that's trying to promote tourism here, and something that the government wants to work on, so I don't know if that's out in the public eye or domain yet, but maybe Counselor Landell might be able to touch on that.
Well, all I'm saying is that if we're going to do this thing, we're going to do it. Like it's an old expression, pooper get off the pot. We're right now in a sensitive issue, a sensitive point with International CIB, and there's no media here today, maybe somebody's watching streaming, but who cares? We're at a point where we're negotiating this. That's where we're at. I'm at the point, spending a lot of time trying to raise money through Nova Scotia Tourism Agency, trying to raise money from other groups, talking to other communities, and if our council is saying, hey, we don't have the stomach for this, let's not do it. I mean, I'd love to do this, better thing is I can do with my time than trying to rattle the doors to, to get this thing going for 2018. The thing is going to be announced, if we can get our ducks in a row, Executive Director is planning to come down here this summer, he'd like to, and sign the memorandum of understanding with, is that we're going to go ahead with this thing, once we get our ducks in a row. And then it would be announced at Kamloops. Now, money's an issue. I'll pay my own way to Kamloops, I couldn't care less, and that's not using my council money, I'll do, pay myself, because I'm totally committed to this thing. But on the other hand, if council's saying, hey, you know, maybe we can't do this 2018, or maybe, you know, something's happening that's coming down the pipe, that it's a better deal for us, or whatever, whatever, and I made my comments about athletic events, this is probably the first large, major arts-based event that we've had in Yarmouth. No community in the world of our size has hosted an event of this size and this grander. And this is going to be actual cash-paying people. I'm not talking about a bunch of hockey kids who are going to come in, who are going to be going to restaurants that we pay the meals for, that we drive around, that we shuttle around, and then we provide free ice surface for them and all that. I'm talking about well-heeled individuals, and Phil and Danny were both there, with their wives, who are going to be dropping in this community a lot of money. They pay their own meals. They pay all this stuff, they pay their own hotel. We don't subsidize that. It's a huge money generator for this town. And if we're saying, no, we can't afford it, great, I'd like to know that, so I can get on my little email today and say, Raymond, I'm sorry, but sucks to be you, but Yarmouth can't pull this off in 2018, we just don't have the financial resources. But on the other hand, we've got to find out what we're doing here. Phil is right, this is one heck of an opportunity, and if we don't have the stomach for it, let's move somewhere else. That's all I'm saying. That's number one. And I think too, on this transit thing, I think we can be creative on that as well. On the heritage thing, I'm disappointed, because this is the second year we've deferred it. I mean, this, and I really think, if we defer the heritage thing this year, let's just kill it, because it's like something on life support. We've played with Heritage Grants for three years, every year we say defer, 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 then, then, then that's, it's like Zion Baptist Church, let's tear the bloody thing down and move somewhere else, you know, because it's, we're just deferring. And obviously, that's the message to the heritage community, that we're not going to do that.
Go ahead, C.A.O.
Okay, so I, I've heard a couple of times the, the idea of looking again at the community grants. So we, I just asked Linda, and in fact, we, if you want to affect this budget under community grants, you have to put, put up your hand and say, stop the process, because the checks are, are being requisitioned based on the spreadsheets, and that is this year's money. If you want to change the amount you spend on community grants going forward, that will affect next year's budget. But because the checks haven't gone out, if you're, if you really want to look at that area and make some sort of an adjustment, we can put a halt on that, bring back the spreadsheets, and have you think about it. Okay, so I just throw that out there. The, the Communities in Bloom sales trip, sales opportunity? There's another way of looking at that one, or another way of addressing that one, Jerry just brought that to my attention, that is through the, through the community events section. We have reduced that section in our budget over the last couple of years, and that is the kind of money, that is the line where we have taken money to, to pay for Music Week, or Junior A Challenge, or Play on Hockey, or whatever, whatever else. We could take some money out of that area, it has been reduced, but we don't think it's all been committed yet this year. So if council wants to put a number in there under Communities in Bloom for that initiative, we could do it there without actually increasing the budget. So it depends on how much you want to take out of there. And I, and I don't know off the top how much has been committed, if there was any of the Music Week money, how much of the Curly money.
I don't call any being committed, but I know stuff's been talked about, things are happening, so.
So it depends on what that's scheduled to be. Was that all of our share? I think it was very true. But I look, remember Phil, last time around, you should, what did that cost us? That was around 30, he was running with 100,000.
That was 28 for us, so 37.
28, yeah, around 30, it changed, I think, I can't remember. See if they're actually moving. I don't think so. So can, you can look at that, though?
Okay, if the council is ready to give that, then that is an option.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I know that, that we are to, to actually address, address our questions, either to yourself, the C.A.O., or to, to the, to Jerry. But if I may, ask Counselor Landell a question on, on the Communities in Bloom. What exactly, what would we be, what would this be taking away from this trip? What was this $12,000 going to enable? I'm sorry, I don't remember. All I remember, you were asking for five people to, for the town to pay for five people to, to, to travel out to Kelowna and help promote the Communities in Bloom for here. to, to travel to Kelowna and help promote the Communities in Bloom for here. So this is your opportunity.
We are looking, we, the request originally, and again, this is if we're still on page with this thing for 2018. In 2015, in Kamloops, BC, they will be announcing, we hope, that Yarmouth will be the host for 2018. So it would be nice to have a delegation in Kamloops to be in the audience and to have a booth presence to start promoting our community for 2018. That's, was the intent. We just ballparked a figure. This would cover basically three delegates, and I'm not sure, you've gone out to BC, I haven't got, know how much you're, you'd know better than I how much your travel claim was to BC. I, I don't know. I've never, I haven't gone on council business to Kamloops. I'd never gone any further, I think, than Ottawa.
You never went to Whistler?
Nope, no, no, didn't go there. No, sorry. So, I mean, you guys who've gone out west know better than I how much it costs. But our goal is, and I think Phil, you can, or Sandy, you can correct me, we were thinking of sending three delegates out, is what the goal was, to send three delegates out to be there. So it was a figure we threw out. So for three delegates at 4,000 a pop, assuming that would work. I don't know. So it was just a number. And they would be there when the announcement is made, and they would be there to have a booth presence for us. Then in 2016, at the next conference, and I'm not sure where that is, I know 2017 is Ottawa. That's where we're expected to be like Kamloops with a fairly substantial delegation because that's the big promotion for the next year. And then finally, we would get it here in 2018. That's the steps along the way. But this is the first time they're announcing it so early. Usually they only announce two years in advance, but this year they want to announce three years in advance to give us time to get our ducks in a row, and also because they know it's a huge undertaking for a small town, and they plan to work with us on it.
Okay. Thank you. I wasn't, it was a while ago. I wasn't too sure if these $12,000 were, were too petty for, for delegates to fly out there for two or three days. I didn't remember. That's why, that's why I asked for clarification. Thank you. I'm sorry. So we still don't know in the meantime how much it would cost to fly out and house, house your three, three or four representatives for three or four days? How long? We still don't know.
Well, that was a number, I think, that I got out of Jeff. Just talking based on what was said in the past. Sometimes, just a random.
I'm, I'm, I'm all for it. I'm all for everything, putting, putting Yarmouth out front and center in the world. But I'm also, but I also, if we could tear every dollar in half or in a third, that would be marvelous. That would be very, very convenient. But I'm just as concerned for the services that we, that we have and can provide for a residency here in town. So I'm a little pulled. I am in favor, but I'm also in favor of taking care of, taking care of homes so people can still turn on their lights and drive down the streets.
Councillor Dennis?
I'm on Communities in Bloom, so when I spoke, it's not against not having the money for Communities in Bloom because I really would like to see us have that. My main concern with the whole budget, and we are here to discuss it, so my main concern was the bus. I want a transit system here. So sometimes we have to think over other things to do what's right for the citizens. So that's where I stand. But I'm hoping that through discussion, we can find a place that we can still have someone, have a group go to, for Communities in Bloom because I'd also like to see that brought to Yarmouth in 2018 because I think it'd be a great boost to our economy. So it's nothing against anything else. It's just that we have to make that decision and find the money for that.
Councillor Mooney?
Could be. But just to, plus the other thing, if, if, you know, we win the Communities in Bloom bid, it gives us an opportunity to talk to other levels of government too. It gives us an opportunity to talk to the provincial government and tourism and economic, whatever they, what do they call it now?
Business.
Business. It gives us an opportunity to talk to people in that, it gives us a chance to talk to people in the COA because when they see an event of this size, they'll be coming on board, especially bringing people on the end of a season, right? It's not gonna be in the middle of the tourist season, so we're not gonna be taking up valuable hotel space. This will be at the, at the back end of the season. So, and unlike councillor Dennis, the most important, I think, I think this year is get the transit up and going. And with the, with the $10,000 for the heritage properties, I think that's an important aspect too. Because that, I think, at one time councillor Langel was 20,000, then we cut it down to 10 and decided to put it off this year. I think it's, it's a good amount of money. It's a fair amount of money, but it's in context of doing any repairs to a heritage home. It's not that much money. So we're hoping to spread this over two or three homes, just to show that we appreciate and to give an opportunity to people to have their houses placked to have another avenue for some funding.
Councillor Langel?
The other thing is, Your Worship, this is a question to Jerry and Jeff. So these figures here that we're looking at cutting, or changes, et cetera. So am I assuming then that the other 85% of the budget that we're not looking at is sacrosanct? Because obviously, at this point, we're expected a day to decide this 15%. So in order to make the other 85% balanced, we've got to cut this 15%. We don't have an opportunity to discuss the 85%? Because I'm, is there any fluff in the 85%? I'm assuming that it's the recommendation that the 85% is sacrosanct funding that we can't look at, or we can't touch?
No.
No, go ahead, Jer.
No, I guess that's where we can further reduce discretionary services down another consideration. I mean, there's, there's not a lot of discretionary expenditures at this point. The last four or five years, we've been trimming and trimming and trimming. But I mean, that's your decision. But really, I mean, what we're, what we're dealing with now is, these are suggestions to do or to look at. If there's a part that you don't want to do, the next decision then is how do you fund them? And how do you fund them would come from maybe those three considerations down below. So that's.
Okay, so we all, let's just, let's, let's just ask, let's just ask this then. Is everybody good with the transit? We want the transit system. Is it, by a show of hands, who is in favor of taking the transit system out of this, you know, we want, we want it to go forward. We don't want it on this list. Yes?
I'm in favor of the transit system, but not this year.
Okay. So you're, you're in favor of keeping it on this list?
Yes.
Okay. So the ones that aren't in favor of putting it on this list, we want the, who wants the transit system to happen in the fall? There we go. Okay, so.
That's not fair, Dan. That's not fair. That's not fair. That's not fair.
What's not fair?
That we have to do something in our term. What we've been doing for the last two and a half.
What have we done, you?
You're asking, I'm asking a question.
We've got status quo, that's my answer.
Wow. No, but I'll tell you what I will do. I'll come back with the list that proves it hasn't been status quo.
Go ahead.
Thanks.
All right. Oh, it's okay. All right. So the next thing, the next biggest issue is the Communities in Bloom budget. That's what I'm hearing at this table. So we're, we're good to go forward with the transit, and we're gonna discuss the Communities in Bloom budget. How do we, how do we make that work so that maybe there's a million ways to look at it? Maybe a smaller delegation goes? I don't, I don't know. Go ahead.
Danger of having my head chopped off. So have we dismissed the idea of staff looking at the transit tax? Has that been dismissed? Because I'm assuming, the comment was made here, we're going with it. So I'm assuming we're going with it on this piece of paper.
So that's a separate issue. So I wouldn't assume that we...
To me, it's a huge issue because if it's, if we're gonna go with that, that's a revenue generator which frees up monies in other areas.
Yeah. So, so it's not off the table. It's just a separate issue, how to generate money. Not a, not a off the table. Nobody, nobody said it was off the table. Okay. So do we want to look at that then? The transit tax. How many people are in favor of a transit tax?
Transit tax, that's, that's a separate budget item. So, so what happened with the transit tax? I don't understand that at all.
How do we pay it? Is that what you're asking?
Okay, let's, let's, okay.
The concept, Deputy Mayor, is it's a surtax, similar to what was put on the Mariner Center years ago to build the Mariner Center. So on your tax bill, you would have a transportation surtax, I'm assuming is the language I prefer, that would be equitably dispersed across the residential and the commercial in the town of Yarmouth. So everybody would, you were saying you want a 1% increase in the residential. I'm suggesting, okay, give a two or three cent increase on the residential, commercial across the board solely for the purpose of funding the transportation system because everybody in our community is gonna benefit from, from a gold star transportation system. So it's jointly funded. So it's a percentage.
Okay. And this is, this is not, none of these are a done deal, I assume. I mean, we have to vote on, right? Okay. So who is in favor of the transit tax?
Five.
Three. Okay.
So that, that...
Well, well, I think what's gonna, well, here's, here's what's gonna have to happen. We can't decide everything today, obviously, because we've got a lot of, we've got, oh, okay. So three people said they're in favor. Yeah. Go ahead, CAO.
So what we were looking for today was really guidance from council in terms of where you want us to go. And like the, like the events line and commitments, that's something we have to go ahead and find. So, you know, if, if there are some issues or some ideas that you want us to look at, whether it be surtaxes or whatever else, or if there are, you know, if there are, if there's a bottom line with council, frankly, that says these things must be in, then just tell us that. And we'll go away and we'll keep hammering away and, you know, we'll get back together and, and show you what else we've come up with. I mean, that's, we just want to know, are we on the right track? And given this list of, of items, you know, where, where do you sit with that? And, and obviously, you know, we're, we're very, very together on the, on the transit system, and some other things maybe not so much. But give us some direction and we'll go away and, and keep working the numbers. This is not intended to be that you would make a decision today to finalize the budget.
Exactly. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. No, I don't plan on making decisions today either. This document we just got, we just looked at it, and we, we should not be making decisions like that in that quick. But I would like to have the exercise of staff looking at that, that transit, call it a tax, call it a surcharge, call it whatever you want to call it. If you want one or two, two cents on that residential and commercial for, we'll say, a year or two years, and show it on, show it on the, the tax rate, what it is and what it's for. I think it'd be a good exercise to see what kind of revenue it would, would generate, and how you would come up with it or name for it, or, and look at other municipal units to see how they do theirs. I think it's a good exercise. We haven't voted on it yet, but we won't know till we have a, have a look at it. I think it's probably an easy look. And far as the CIBC, I, I don't want to send less. If anything, I'd probably want to send more. But with what we have here, if it's the $15,000 budget, then it's a $15,000 budget. That's, that's their cheap, that's their cheap advertising. And people are going out there on their own time. And for, for the, for the taxpayers to pay that, for people to go out there voluntarily for four or five days, that's pretty cheap. And you have some good salespeople out there. I witnessed it in PEI. Really good salesmanship out there for people. So I'm not willing to take that off the table. You want to hear it? $60,000 for the transit? I, I want to keep that, and I want to, want to bring it up earlier than later this fall. The $15,000 for the, for the CIBC? Yes, we keep that. $15,000 is just a pittance when you're looking at advertising. We've all said the same thing for the, the book and the brochure, for the, for the books that go on the boats and all the other stuff, the thousands of dollars we, we spend there. We didn't blink an eye to do that, and, and which was good, and I'm in favor of it. But this here, $15,000, folks, not a hell of a lot of money. And if you're gonna nickel and dime by not sending this one and that one and cut it down, well, I think before we start throwing rocks in glass houses, we ought to look at our own houses when we go on trips, that is. That's my opinion.
That's your budget, though, I think. That's number eight. Not just for the trip.
What do you have on?
I mean, the Communities in Bloom. Is that your yearly budget?
Yearly budget is $15,000. It's all again, that's all again. Chiefs, Canadian, that's it.
Heritage's cheaper.
How much is heritage?
Do you have, how much is our budget?
Councillor Mooney?
Yeah, and I think we get down to, in all, all the pages here, we get down to a $17 million budget. And to me, it just comes down to about 60, 70, $82,000 out of a $17 million budget. That's what it's come down to, to me, and I'm looking for those three. You know, I'm gonna talk about the big picture, right? And you just said it, councillor Dan. I want to see the transit. I'd like to see the, and it might be councillor Dawes, might have a point. It might be, might not be 12,000 to send three people out there, but might not, might be 10. And we'll, we'll have a look at that. And I think we should do, because I think the, the heritage grant, I think, should be done. I think we talked about it a couple of times, and I think it was put out in the public that we were gonna do it. And to put it off another year, I don't think it sends a good message. And it's not a lot amount, not a big amount of money, but just one little extra incentive in case somebody's thinking about purchasing a, a house that's placked, that there's an opportunity to do something. Might not be much, but an opportunity to access some money. So when it comes to talking to the provincial department of heritage, and the councillor over there is the chair to the advisory committee to the, to the minister, it shows that we're, that we're looking at it and we're putting some skin in the game, and I think it's important.
Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, Your Worship. It's all important. We're all important. As to the increasing any taxes, I, I, I'm 200% against that, especially at this time in our history and in our future. We've just, we just had one year of the ferry behind us, and residences' business especially, they are now, they're now just starting to feel the rug under, under their feet again for the first time in four years. And this last year has not, I mean, it has been, has been very, very good for them, but they have not been able to recoup their losses over the previous four years. So any increase of any sort to anyone would be like pulling the rug out from under their feet that they just barely got under them. So I'm not in favor of that. Promote our town? Absolutely. As far across the country and, and all around the world as far as we can, I'm in favor of that. What I would, what I would suggest is, and perhaps, perhaps I only heard what I wanted to hear. I, I believed at the time that it was going to be looked into how much flights hotel for three or four days over there for, for three or four people would cost. And I'm fine with it. I'm fine with, I would be fine with accepting that. But not a ballpark figure. But I can't. It's just, it's, it's, it's just my training, that's all. That's all. Thank you. Other than that, I'm fine with the, with the proposed change. It's just...
So we're looking at, we're looking at finding, I don't know who's keeping track of this, Linda, I guess. We're looking at, at finding out the costs, you're asking?
Yeah, do, yeah.
Or, okay?
Do a proper budget within a budget.
Okay. We're looking at the heritage grants, or finding money for that, like to see how we can find money for that. We can't, and I'm just saying this, I'm not, we can't really touch the grants to organizations because we've already given that money out.
That's something we should look at for next year.
But for next year. So everybody's good with that? Is anybody not? Put your hand up. Okay, so we're all right with that one? Okay, so we're all right with that one? Go ahead.
Well, I'm, I'm curious about that, because we have, we allocated $80,000. We only spent 70, and then we committed 3,500 of the remaining 10 to the little grants to organizations for cleanup. So, I'm assuming there's still 6,500 there? Or am I right or wrong?
Couple of small issues there. First is that last year, we didn't budget 80, we budgeted 77...
Five. We, we reduced it 2,500 last year.
Right. And so, he, Jerry proposed to reduce another five here, but we put in 25 instead of 35 for the cleanup. So, to kind of, comes close, within a thousand.
So, there's no extra money, you're just saying?
No extra money, I mean, for...
Okay. Recreation? We're just waiting, we're gonna, where are we with recreation? What are y'all thinking? We're just, all we need to do is, is help these gentlemen find out where we want to look, where we don't.
I'm fine with the, like, I'm fine with the changes with the proposed 15,000. Are you talking about recreation? I'm sorry?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I'm sure you've done your homework, you know more about it than I do. I take your lead.
Y M C A, we good? Parks? I'm going backwards. Waterfront Marina? We're at the Communities in Bloom budget again to find, to find a way to send them, to send them.
We're fine with that, I understand.
Go ahead, Counselor Dawes.
Thank you, Your Worship. I am not on the Waterfront Development Corporation, and perhaps I'm reading this correctly, perhaps incorrectly, but there were reducing, proposing a $7,000 reduction from the Waterfront Marina budget, plus another 70,000 up on top on the grant.
It's two different.
They are two different things? All right, I'm not on the Waterfront Development Corporation, I'm not, I saw, I, I don't know what the plans are.
So, I'll just, I'll just take, I'll just take the opportunity to help clarify there. So, Waterfront Development Corporation is not involved in operations, they're involved in development. So, they conceive of projects, they pitch the projects to council. Council either likes them or doesn't. If they like them, then they put some money on the table, and Waterfront Development goes and searches for matching or leveraging for that money. And when they get the money in hand, then they execute the capital project. When it's completed, it gets turned over to the town. So, the 7,000 in the, in the Waterfront Marina budget is an operational budget that is run by our Operational Services Department. The, the W D C grant at the top is, is in fact sort of an operational grant to the Waterfront Development Corporation. So, what we're saying over, over this coming year is that they would have very limited resources with which to develop the concepts of, of kind of that next project.
Okay. All right. And they are aware, the Waterfront Development Corporation is aware of these, these proposed changes?
We have...
Is that going to put a crimp in their plans? That's all, that's...
Usually, what, what doesn't happen is, is that we don't go to Waterfront Development Corporation and get a budget.
We give it to them.
We give it to them. And whether that's fair or right, that, that's just the way it has, has occurred over the years. So, so no, we haven't gone to them and said, "Here, here's, here's an idea. How about you have less money?" But in reality, you know, our capital budget, if you look at our capital budget for this year, and even what was, what was carrying over into next year, there isn't a lot there for Waterfront Development. So, if they are to conceive of a project, let's say, a, I don't know, a, a million dollar project, they would, I would expect to be looking for at least a third of that money from the town, which would be capital. And again, that's a decision of council, but based on sort of where we are this year, it would be difficult to find that money. So, I don't know that there's a lot of sense in encouraging them to conceive of and develop concepts on projects that we can't in the immediate future put our money on the table for. But council could be of a completely different mind and say, "No, that is, that is really important, and put the operational money back in there so they can conceive of the projects, and leave the capital budget to us, we'll find the money." If that's, you know, or, or tell staff, you know, shuffle the deck and, and find the money.
Okay.
That, again, is, is council's prerogative, and, and this is just an idea of, of what you could do based on sort of where, where we think we are. But completely within your discretion.
Thank you.
Good? Okay?
Thank you, that, that answers a few questions, what you have to add now?
So, we're at the increase the garbage rate? Good with that? Speak now or forever?
Counselor Dawes might not be...
What's that?
She might not be, she doesn't want to increase.
You okay with increasing the garbage rate?
No. She is listening, and she is against increasing any, any property taxes.
Okay. All right.
That's what she thought she made clear earlier.
Okay, now it's clear? Now it's clear. Okay, so, the transit, we're good. Reducing the Wi-Fi? We okay? We still get 10,000 in that? Okay. And the Frost Park lights? And I thought we were going to ask for community to sponsor some of those things. That'll be a big deal, too. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. The mayor's grants? Doesn't matter to me. 12,000, the compost tipping fees, increase those by 2%? And the waterfront? Okay, so really, there's just a couple issues that I think we all agree need to be revisited. You gentlemen find us some money? Sorry.
Do that today or next Thursday?
No, we need to... Yeah, so, so... Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Jeff? I might clear this up here. If we're increasing compost tipping fees, is that, is that raising taxes or not?
Yeah, I, I, that, that is not a, a tax on your tax bill, that is a user fee.
Like when you go out there?
Yeah, so anybody goes out there and takes organics, or any other municipality brings their organics to our compost facility, we'll get paid 2% more for every, every ton.
Okay.
Most of that, by the way, because we operate and own, most of that, 2% is paid by other municipalities to us. So, it's a revenue source.
Okay, so if people from the town go out there? This, this is not going on?
People, people generally, generally don't bring their organics out there unless it's like a load of brush or something. Typically, most of that is paid from the, the municipal haulers, or the commercial haulers, collecting from grocery stores and so on, bringing large truck loads, and it's a revenue source for us.
Good enough, thank you.
Good? Okay. So, any, Jerry or Jeff, any questions? Don't know how you're going to find, find it, but you'll find it. You'll figure it. You good? Okay. Jerry, what about these next couple? And is there anything anybody else wants before we, are we done? Chair?
Those are, those are the, the next level of detail that supports the front page. So, I mean, if you're looking through those in the next week and have questions or anything, you can do it email, through an email. And if there's other areas that you see in there that you want to be discussed, I guess we can discuss them next week as well. But that's just support for the front page. In some regards, I've still used, I'm still used the Excel spreadsheets that I've been using, but pulling some of the background and the information I need off the new system was, was relatively easy. Relatively easier. So...
Just wondering how you're doing in general, but that would be all integration, that's all?
Yep. It's, you know, it's like, every day, it's, every day, as you try new things and you see how it works, things get better, so... Yep.
Yeah, we actually do, and it's making everybody sick. It's filthy. I said that right out loud. It's filthy, it's old, and it needs to be replaced, not by a rug.
So, next, so next Thursday, unfortunately?
Yeah, what's that? Next Tuesday?
It's out there with Jerry and Jeff.
So, also next Tuesday, Jerry Eisner, water rate review. And is Dan coming from housing? Okay. So, next Tuesday, we'll basically be in all day, we'll be in all day. Yeah? Well, for whoever wants to come. We'll have the budget in the morning, then, then Jerry Eisner's coming with regard to the water rate review update and sewer system. And then the Department of Housing is coming to, or the, yeah, the Housing Department's coming to present, to talk to us. At 2:00.
Certainly, any advanced material for those questions?
For the water guy? For housing?
Well, it's nice to read this stuff, read it...
Yeah, what's? I think they...
Yeah, I have material, and I should read it in order that you can ask, to provide a question.
Yeah, just, just ask and see what, though. Good? Yeah? Wonder about lunch? Depends how long we're here. Maybe if we're going to be here a while, we can get lunch. Well, it should be 12 till, whenever we finish, till 1:00. That's when, is that when Eisner's coming? Oh, they're coming at noon. Oh. Yeah. Okay. Everybody okay? We bring something in? Yeah, bring your own sandwich. Okay, anything else for this morning? Jerry? Jeff? Okay. Where'd you go? Not so much, but...
Jeff, did you say the water rate view's at noon? Next Tuesday? So, it is?